Call to order, the August 18th, 2025 County Commission Meeting. Welcome all of our guests, glad you're here with us tonight, come back at any opportunity that you can have to be with us. At this time, we introduce Commissioner Scruggs for the prayer and pledge. If Doug would have come, somebody's car would have broken down, because every time I see him, my car tears up. He worked for DNR for a long time.
Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here safely today, I'd like to ask you to plead, bless the meeting that is now before us, I'd like to ask you to order please, keep everybody safe after the meeting is over as we all go on our separate ways, you just know to pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for being here tonight. Take it, Commissioner Scruggs, if you will, to pass, yes, on your panel, record your nights, you're present tonight's meeting. Commissioner Bernard said when y'all get through, if you want to come out and get some cinnamon bread, he would give you a cinnamon bread, probably would charge you, but he said he would give it to you. I tried to get him to give it, and he wasn't going to go for that route, so.
Twenty-two present, three absent.
Twenty-two present, three absent, and so we'll move forward now. At this time, we'll have public comment period, anyone that's wishing to speak before the County Commission can come forward and state your name and address for the record. If you're here for the rezoning, we'll do that one a little bit later, so if you want to just have record public comment period, this would be your opportunity to speak. Are you here for the rezoning?
I am, I'm not.
Got you.
You should all have a booklet on your desks, the mayor and attorney as well. I'm Ken Young, 1221 Shop Springs Road. The problems caused by the Water and Wastewater Authority have become more expensive, more public, and much more serious. In your booklet, you'll see a table of contents describing six sections. The first section shows 11 county commissioners linked to water authority problems in their district. One-third of our step systems are underperforming. Sunset Harbor recently drew a $50,000 fine. The Shop Springs and Ford Projects are now under a T-Deck consent agreement with fines. The treatment system at Ridgewater Estates is a problem for every commissioner and for every citizen. In your booklet, Ridgewater is found beside the yellow sticky note in Section 3. The Southern Environmental Law Center, the SELC, notified the Water Authority and its operator Adenus that they could both be sued for quote, "longstanding and ongoing violations of the Clean Water Act." Discharging affluent into the Cumberland River is a federal offense. This won't be decided in county court. SELC is the most potent environmental advocacy group in America. They pursue only the most egregious polluters, the TVA, British Petroleum, Dominion Energy, now, the Water and Wastewater Authority of Wilson County. Let that sink in. If a settlement is not reached in 60 days, the Water Authority is going to find itself in a federal court answering very difficult questions, but a settlement could be costly for its customers, and this could bankrupt Adenus. Then what? Why are so many step systems failing? With a high failure rate, why hasn't the Authority changed vendors? Why does the Authority promote Adenus and their step systems? Remember, it was the Authority alone who lobbied you to cut in half lot sizes in A1. With so many problems, why has the Authority not demanded better performance from Adenus? Why haven't you demanded better performance from the Water Authority? How bad does it have to get? Since I first asked you for help, all I've done is connect dots using public records and then ask simple questions. Mr. Jennings may not have had time to study the recall process. Ironically, he's been too busy cleaning up the mess the Water Authority made at the new school. Again, for the good of the county, get your lawyer's advice on recall. Bring the Chairman of the Water Authority here to this room to get answers to these questions, and account for the problems his Authority has created. Until you do, it's only going to get worse. Thank you, and I'll answer any question.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak before the County Commission? Seeing none, we'll close public comment period, and we'll move on to the report from Steering Committee. Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Steering Committee met in call session on Monday, July 21st, 2025, in the upstairs conference room. A copy of those minutes are in your packet. The Steering Committee also met in regular session on Thursday, August 7th, 2025, in the upstairs conference room. Both sets of minutes are in your copy, I'll move that they be received and filed.
Motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Adoption of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, everyone has a copy of the agenda, however, we need to make some changes under Resolutions 8.5 and 8.6 need to be moved prior to voting on Resolution Number 4. So I make the motion to amend the agenda to move 5 and 6 before Resolution Number 4.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Fields?
No, sir.
So now we adopt the, make a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
No.
Motion of second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Be good. Consent agenda is none, so at this time, we'll have special recognition, and Commissioner Fields, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Before I begin to read this, I'm going to say that the gentleman that we're recognizing is not responsible for the blizzard conditions we're undergoing. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring News 2 meteorologist Davis Nolan for over 40 years of dedicated service. Whereas Davis Nolan began his television career in Tallahassee, Florida as the Weekend Weathercaster at WCTV, at that time, he was working toward the BS in meteorology from Florida State University. He's a Seminole. He then served as a weather anchor at WTVT in Tampa, Florida, and whereas in 2005, Davis became one of the first in the nation during the new quote, "certified broadcast meteorologist" end quote designation from the American Meteorological Society. Although Davis has held the AMA's Broadcast Seal of Approval since 1979, this is an upgrade. He has also held the National Weather Association's Seal of Approval since 2001, and whereas he recently became one of the few broadcast meteorologists in the nation during the quote, "certified consulting meteorologist" end quote designation from the American Meteorological Society. This requires writing a technical paper, completing a written exam, and then an oral exam administered by the AMS Board of Consulting Meteorologists. Currently, there are only 239 active CCMs worldwide, most of whom work in public industry. And whereas Davis has been forecasting weather in middle Tennessee for over 40 years, and whereas he takes great pride in his accuracy of his weather forecast, especially during severe weather, where he has tracked storms on air over several hours, and whereas although born in Nautilus, Louisiana, Davis has made Mount Juliet, Tennessee, his home, and whereas Davis has a great love for music, for fishing, and for sailing, he has become quite well-known for his fishing hobby and can be found on the water on days off, weather permitting. And whereas he is also very active in the middle Tennessee community, since 1981, he's made hundreds of visits to area schools, explaining weather to their students. And whereas after more than 40 years of weather forecasting, Davis has decided to journey into the next chapter of his life and enjoy a well-deserved retirement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize Davis Nolan for 40-plus years of dedicated service to the residents of Wilson County, Tennessee, by providing the most up-to-date accurate weather forecasting in an effort to keep our citizens as safe as possible. We encourage all citizens to join us in this worthy observance.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
You can go and introduce your family.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure will. Thank you so much. I'll try to be brief, which I'm usually not. First of all, I wanted, I feel like it's sort of strange, because I think I'm a newcomer to Wilson County, and I just realized, I moved here in 95, my wife and I were talking, it's been 30 years. So, you know, I worked with Lisa Patton for 25 years, and there's, you know, people, and a lot of you grew up here, and your parents grew up here, so I'm a newcomer, as far as you're concerned, when I realize it, gosh, I'm not as much of a newcomer as I thought, but, so this is a real honor, I got to be in the parade the other day as the grand marshal, and I want to thank everybody for allowing me to do that, and this great honor here. But my wife, Amy, and my daughter, Amanda, both have been here with me in Wilson County for quite a long time. Of course, Amanda grew up here, went to Lakeview Elementary School, went to Horace Mount Juliet Middle, and then, of course, we'd be Zoned Green Hill now, but back in those days, she's a golden bear, golden bear, so, yeah, and valedictorian at that, too, right? I don't want to brag too much, because she's going to New York City next week to get to sing at.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, excuse me. What's the name of that famous place?
Fifty-four Below.
Fifty-four Below, something to do with a bunch of Broadway things and Hamilton and stuff like that, so she's an aspiring singer, like, nobody around here does that, right? But, yeah, I aspired to it, but I tell people that there was two things that I loved, and that was meteorology and music, and God actually let me do one of them for a living, and have fun doing the other one, and then pass on the music to this one. So, and again, this is such an honor, I want to thank you all so much, and hopefully, like Jimmy Holt told me years ago, not about the life jacket, but people say, he said, people think I'm always fishing, and he said, I hardly have a chance to fish at all, you see it on TV, but I hardly have time to, and they think the same thing about me, you know, because I'm hardly ever out, I either got a doctor's appointment or mowing the lawn on my days off. Well, now, I'm actually going to get out there and do some fishing, so, anyway, thank you very much, I really appreciate this, great, great honor.
Thank you so much, and congratulations on retirement. This time, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Bowman.
And at this time, I'd like to invite Team Tennessee up and their coaches. This is the 12U team that represented Wilson County and went on to represent the state of Tennessee at the Diamond Youth Baseball World Series. We can do a few of y'all on this side, if you want to spread out. Few of y'all stay on this side, there we go. Perfect. All right, I think we got you guys all in the shot there. A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring Team Tennessee 12U on their outstanding achievements in the Diamond Youth Baseball World Series. Whereas Team Tennessee 12U had an outstanding season, resulting in their appearance in the Diamond Youth Baseball World Series. And whereas Team Tennessee 12U was D1 O-Zone District Champions with a district tournament record of 2-0. And whereas Team Tennessee defeated Pleasant View 17-0, and Greenbrier 3-1, and advanced on to the state championship. And whereas the state championship, the team had an impressive record of 5-0, defeating Kingston once, Savannah twice, and Fairview twice. And whereas Team Tennessee 12U went on to represent Tennessee in the Diamond Youth Baseball World Series in Lexington, South Carolina. And whereas playing hard and leaving it all on the field, the team walked away from the World Series with a tie against Louisiana, and losses against Georgia and Arkansas. And whereas players on the team included Marshall Johnson, Mason Craighead, Luke Walden, Cooper Judd, Avon Maggert, Jack Saunders, James Thomas, Jackson Holcomb, Jacob Rezens, Colton McCarty, N.J. Carbonell, and Maddox Hudgens. And whereas coaches included Head Coach Ben Johnson, and Assistant Coaches Kyle Craighead and Nathan Holcomb. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize Team Tennessee 12U for their outstanding postseason run and appearance in the Diamond Youth Baseball World Series. We wish them many years of success as they continue on in their athletic journey.
All in favor say aye?
And Head Coach Ben Johnson, if you want to say a few words?
Sure. I'd just like to say thank you to everyone in the room, and just all the support the community was to us. These kids did a lot of hard work, they earned every bit of the time that they were rewarded with, the opportunities they were given. They put a lot of work in, a lot of sweat, a few tears along the way, and broken bones, and different things like that, but they represented this community, this state, very well, very proud of them for their accomplishments. As coaches, I know we didn't reach the level there that we would like, but we left a memory for these kids that they'll remember the rest of their lives, that, you know, it wasn't at the top of our list, but it's going to be one of the top memories they share with their buddies for the rest of their lives, and they'll talk about when they're our ages and having a good time. So, thank you again for all of your support. The community was huge in just helping us out and getting us there in all the different ways, but thank you, and thank you for the, those that are involved in Mayor Hutto and just keeping the league running, and just all the things that we need. It could be better, so there's a lot of rooms for support out there, if you're looking for an area to help with the league, we could use some help out there, but thank you for all you've done, thank you.
All right, and athletes, as we head out, I'm going to let each one of you come to the microphone, we'll start with this side, if that's okay, we'll have you say your name and the position that you play.
I'm in Jake Carbonell, and I play catcher and outfield.
I'm Cooper Judd, and I play catcher.
I'm Maddox Hudgens, and I play outfield.
I'm Colton McCarty, and I play first.
I'm Marshall Johnson, and I play second.
I'm Luke Walden, and I play third.
I'm Jack Saunders, and I play outfield.
I'm Jackson Holcomb, and I play shortstop.
I'm James Thomas, and I play outfield.
My name's Mason Craighead, and I play pitcher.
And our other two coaches, if you guys want to come and say your name?
Yeah. Kyle Craighead, thank you all.
I'm Nathan Holcomb, most of y'all know me, thank you all for everything that you've done for us.
At this time, we will hold a public hearing prior to considering an amendment to the land use plan, as well as rezoning requests for properties located on McCurry Road. I'll ask Mr. Christopher Lawless to come forward. I need a motion to go out of session, I think.
I'm moved.
All in favor say aye?
All right, Commissioner, a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, August 18th, 2025, at 7:00 PM or thereafter, in the County Commission Room of the Wilson County Courthouse. Application has been made by property owner McCurry iOS Ventures LLC requesting a land use plan amendment from low-density residential area to high-density, high-intensity commercial area. The applicant also seeks to rezone the same property from R1 rural residential to C3 PUD Highway Commercial Plan Use Development. The property contains approximately 5.01 acres and is located at 3410 McCurry Road, and is further referenced as map 36.01 on the Wilson County Tax Map 137. A second case is the application has been made by property owner McCurry Ventures East LLC and Tanny Mattingly requesting a land use plan amendment from low-density residential area to medium to high-density, medium to high-intensity commercial area. The applicant also seems to rezone the property from R1 rural residential to C2 general commercial with a planned unit development overlay. The property contains approximately 3.98 acres and is located at 3266, 3290, and 3320 McCurry Road, and is further referenced as parcels 3609, 3610, and 3611 on Wilson County Tax Map 137. Copies of this request have been on file in the Wilson County Planning Office and have been available to see during regular business hours.
Anyone here wishing to speak on these properties, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. I have Nathan Quinn, is that correct?
Quinn with a Q.
Excuse me.
Okay. Nathan Quinn, I'm here representing both land use amendment and rezone requests, and I just wanted to give a little bit of color behind the requests. We're actually the same developers that are working on some industrial development along McCurry Road, and we're the same developers that committed to making significant roadway improvements from the Love's Gas Station at Couchville Pike, all the way to and including replacing the existing bridge over Hurricane Creek. And this request was driven in large part due to our pursuit of the roadway widening and realignment of McCurry Road and Couchville Pike. It was also driven by our commitment to the flood improvements and to provide an overland channel all the way from where that intersection floods today, all the way down to Hurricane Creek, to give it an actual way for that water to get out, to where it overtops the road to plus or minus 10 feet today. And these improvements, and these rezone requests and land use amendment requests are tied to those improvements. In both instances, the one on the corner is tied to the road improvements to where we wouldn't be able to pull a building permit until the roadway improvements were completed. And then, secondly, the McCurry GCP is tied to those improvements as well, to where we would not be able to have access to McCurry Road until those improvements have been made. And I just ask for your consideration on these matters, and we're actually asking on the McCurry GCP for a one-meeting deferral, but I'm here to answer any questions while the item's on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak before the County Commission on these properties? Seeing none, I have a motion to go back into session, second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Christopher, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. I want to handle the deferral request first, unless you want to have conversation on that as well, we can answer any questions, but this is the McCurry iOS Ventures LLC case, it's the C3 PUD, it's the 5.01 acres located at 3410 McCurry Road. The applicant is requesting a one-month deferral for that case, and that'll come back up at your September County Commission if granted.
Do I hear a motion out of effect? Do I hear a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye? Christopher?
All right, the second case, the following application will be presented to the County Commission, August 18th. Again, this is property owner McCurry Ventures East LLC and Tanny Mattingly requesting a land use plan amendment from low-density residential area to medium and high-density slash medium and high-intensity commercial area. The applicant is also seeks to rezone the same property from R1 rural residential to a C2 planned commercial use development. The property contains approximately 3.98 acres and is located at 3266, 3290, and 3320 McCurry Road. The land use plan amendment and the rezoning of this property request was presented to the Wilson County Planning Commission on Friday, June 20th, 2025, and both are being forwarded to the Wilson County Commission with positive recommendations.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Hobbs first, who's in his district.
Me and Commissioner Evans have been working on this a few months now. The problem is, we have so many projects in this area right here. Us as commissioners, we're trying to do some due diligence, just kind of set back a little bit, and let the infrastructure catch up to us. Our infrastructure is not in place to go approving anything else right now until we get some kind of projects done. Right now, we haven't had no projects completed. We have met with Mr. Quinn numerous occasions, and met with the planning director on Friday of last week. We're not, I don't want to kill this project, because it's a great project, but I would like to defer it until we get some more of our infrastructure projects put in place than we were promised.
I had a motion and a second on the floor. I didn't take those, because I normally go to the commissioner of his district to let you hear what he said. I asked our attorney, he said that the motion to defer, if that's what you decide to do, would take precedence, is that correct?
Correct.
So I wanted to be sure that both people that said that understood why I didn't take that, and so, if that's the case, you have a motion on the floor to defer?
Yes.
For 90 days?
I think it's going to take another day off, and just see when they can get back with it.
So motion, so motion to defer, is there a second for that? All right, now discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Yeah.
Got one no? Got two nos?
Give us the second.
Okay. That was Mr. Gentry and Mr. Fields, were no, everybody else was yes. So the motion to defer passed, okay. Report for the Minutes Committee, Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Minutes Committee met in call session on Monday, July 2021, 2025, at 6:45 in the upstairs conference room. A copy of those minutes are in your packet. The Minutes Committee also met in regular session on Thursday, August 7th, 2025, in the upstairs conference room. Both copies of the minutes are in your packet. I will say that we need to make some changes to the minutes, there are two name corrections that need to be made on page one. The clear was given by the pastor, Phil Wilson, not Will Kins, so it's Wilson, and on page two, Commissioner Bowman said that her son's name is Dylan, D-Y-L-A-N, not Joey, so we can make those two changes. I make the motion that we amend the minutes to make those changes.
Got a motion to pass the minutes as amended, I hear a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Reading of the minutes?
Most of this has been agreed on the minutes.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
They have Cumberland signs and stickers in the back that were dropped off for you to take, if you'd like to take those tonight to put out at your home or other places, I want to let you know that, and at this time, I'd ask Ms. Carrie Corder if she would come forward. She's here to talk to you just a few minutes, five, I think she said, about Habitat for Humanity. She actually came back when we had the long night before and had to, so we let her go early, just so she didn't have to stay for all of that, so she come back tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hutto, Commissioners and guests. Thank you to the mayor for inviting me to speak on behalf of Habitat for Humanity in Wilson County. My name is Carrie Corder, and I'm the philanthropy manager. It is a privilege and a pleasure to join you. I must say, as much as I like I must say, as much as I love peaches, upon entering this meeting the last time I was here, given that I'm not nearly as talented a speaker as the mayor, I was concerned this could become an ancient Rome situation, particularly when I saw one of the Commissioners holding rather a large tomato. Habitat is most grateful to Wilson County for their longstanding support. I'd like to thank the Commission for the generous grant that was recently awarded to Habitat for the home we are building here this fall at 314 Sycamore Street in Lebanon. We had a total of 46 applicants, and our homeowner services department is currently reviewing them. Habitat for Humanity seeks to put God's love into action by bringing people together to build homes, communities, and hope. Habitat began work in Wilson County in 1992 and has now built or renovated 99 homes. Our vision is a world where everyone has affordable homeownership solutions. We accomplish this by partnering with families who help build their home, pay affordable mortgages, and by engaging sponsors and volunteers to fund and help build the homes. Habitat is part advocate, part construction. We are a home builder, an educator, a mortgage lender, and a retailer. There are many ways to become involved. We are always looking for affordable land and build sponsors. Sponsors work with the future homeowners and our construction team on the build site. We provide the equipment and training. Sponsors are listed in our annual report and are welcome to be a part of the future homeowner's journey from the start of the build through the home's dedication. Our Restore in Lebanon is a wonderful place to shop, donate, and volunteer. If you've not been, I encourage you to visit our Restore. It looks like a Lowe's and has beautiful, brand-new items. A few examples are Kins linen and sheet silk, excuse me, bedding, outdoor movie screens, and new sofas from Ashley Furniture. We carry everything from art, antiques, construction materials, and home goods, and accept donated items in saleable condition. We have a wide selection that changes daily. Another way to become involved is by spreading the word, applying for and/or qualifying for Habitat homeownership. Kindly direct anyone who may be interested in owning a home to the Habitat Greater Nashville website and to sign up for alerts for open application periods. Habitat just recently celebrated the culmination of a very unique project. You may be aware of the community revitalization of the Parkwood Ballpark in Nashville. Habitat originally planned to build 26 homes here. Our CEO Danny Heron and Sherri Stinson, our Vice President of Public Relations and Communications, worked with Thurman Bryant, the Board President of Parkwood, to renovate the ballpark that has been here since 1966. In 1984, it was the only minority-owned ballpark in the country. They worked closely with community leaders, philanthropists, Morgan Wallen's Foundation. He actually donated $500,000. It's my understanding that's his largest donation to date. The Nashville Sounds, Music City Center, and many others. This project is an excellent example of the power of showing up and building a trusted organization. Danny attended every single opening day for several consecutive years at the park. Don't quote me, but I think it's 15. He listened to the community, cast the vision, told the story, and leveraged relationships to build 26 affordable homes, revitalized the ballpark, and helped build a 59-acre metro park. If anyone is interested in learning about becoming involved as a sponsor, I would be more than happy to arrange to meet with you to answer any questions you may have. Thank you again for your time, consideration, longstanding commitment, and support of Habitat for Humanity. Wishing you all a wonderful evening, and may God bless you always. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you so much. At this time, Commissioner McFarland would be to talk about the history book for Wilson County.
I'm representing Lena Grandstaff down at the archives. Most of you know that she has four pictorial history books out. Well, the fifth book has just hit the shelves. It's a wonderful, wonderful book with a lot of photographs, historical photographs, a lot of historical notations in it. And I'd certainly encourage you to get it. On the very back cover of it is our posters we had for the 225th birthday of Wilson County. And it's a special thing. On page 144, there's a gentleman who used to serve on the county commission here by the name of Haskell Evans, and I believe that's the great uncle of our president, Haskell Evans, and they called him in this book, Squire Evans. And the only difference, and this Haskell and our Haskell, one of the books is a little bit better-looking, so thank you. Doesn't have any tomatoes, though.
Mr. Goodall, all the notaries good?
We're good.
Do you have a motion to approve a notary list?
All of them approved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Judicial Commissioners, I will turn it over at this time to Mr. John Gentry.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We have a young man working in our judicial commission office, Kyle Jacobs. I believe he's in the audience. Could you please stand up, please? He's a part-timer right now, and he's also a... He works at Amazon as a supervisor, but he's decided he's going to give up that career and try to become a judicial commissioner full-time. He's very reliable, resort-oriented, and I highly recommend I make a motion we elect him to be a judicial commissioner for one year beginning September 1st.
Second. Discussion. Anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record reflect as unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Gentry. Report from the Burge Management Committee. I'm going to go to Commissioner Smith.
Sorry for that. That is my bad. I should have warned you.
You're good.
Set of minutes from August 5th in your packet.
We met August 5th, Tuesday, in the upstairs conference room. Your minutes are in your packet. I move that they be approved and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Burge Management Director's report, Director Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, good to see you. We have been working like bees, which work pretty hard, don't they? This is a busy, busy month for us. Not only are we helping with the fair right now, of course, we have the IndyCar race coming up, State Horse Show, along with regular calls. We're trying to survive the heat ourselves, which is a big deal in our line of work. You know, I have put out criteria during heat advisories and extreme heat warnings for people, especially in turnout gear. So just know that I have things in place for that. Other than that, still maintaining. New hire class is finished. Most of those are doing their FTO rides. So at the end of this month, should have full staff back up to par. Other than that, that concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
Law Enforcement Committee met on Thursday, August 7th at 5:00 PM up here in the conference room. Minutes in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Robert Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, your reports in your packet. The numbers are pretty much typical summer numbers. They're all pretty much consistently up. It's just that time of year, the numbers of calls really sticks out to me, up to 5,126. So, but like I said, it's summer, and another one was the civil warrants and up 300 or 400. It's just that time of year. As Director Cooper said, he's working like bees. We're working like a swarm of bees. All of us are. The fair's going on. We got the races, he said, coming up. Probably got 50-something personnel at the fairs we speak, and it's hot out there, and it's crowded out there. So it's been a successful fair so far. Hope we keep it that way. On the second page, I would like to address this. You see the roadside pickup. That's another typical summer where the number of roads goes down because we're tied up in different areas of the fair, different things like that. So as quick as I can get them inmates back away from all these other special projects, I will be getting them out on the road. And BJ Stafford, stand up just a minute. I may have never... And this is... I apologize. BJ Stafford is one... I say new. He was appointed chief deputy about two or three months ago, two months ago. I just want everybody to put a name with a face. So Lance Howell has not stepped down. He's moved down to a more... Less stressful job at his request, and he's still with us. But if you need anything, BJ Stafford or me or any of us are here for you. So I told him tonight I was going to let him make the report, but he got a little jumpy on that, so... But his time's coming. But I just want to mention, there's a packet within the packet, okay? It's in every one of his packet. I don't know who was at the meeting, law enforcement meeting, who wasn't. But them numbers there are in there for your consideration and viewing, and I would ask each of you to take a look at them. But that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir. And I've got two more. How many what?
Vacant season.
I didn't check today, but I can say I'm probably five or six in patrol corrections. This is probably seven or eight.
Okay, thank you.
Don't quote me on them numbers. I can get you definite numbers if you can call me tomorrow.
Commissioner Bries.
I just wanted to say thank you to both the Sheriff's Department and OEMA. We had a country singer who announced on social media that they were going to have an album debut in Two-Foot Cove, and we didn't get any notice. So we found out through social media, as far as I know, and both the sheriff and Joey Cooper with OEMA put together a plan very quickly and had boats on the water and made sure that there weren't any issues in the streets in my district. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for the great service that you provided to District 18 for Gavin Adcox's album debut.
I think he posted on social media, "Don't mess up in Wilson County, you'll get arrested." Okay? We did arrest some people. We towed some cars.
Thank you.
And we was at... We had no clue that was going to happen that week, okay? It was a surprise to us. It just popped up on social media. But in saying that, there was another event out there last weekend, if nobody knew, that we had to deal with. It was a more laid-back, but there was a bunch of boats in that cove.
Yeah, there's usually a bunch of boats out there, but I didn't know there was other ones.
So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Denton.
Yes, Sheriff. I just was... I just, just for clarity, I know y'all are working hard now, and this number of five... The highest inmate in population or the average daily, it looks like it's like 525, and then 144 state prison. Is the state prison inmates included in that 525, or is that plus the...
Yes, sir, they are included in 525.
But that still puts you way up toward capacity, doesn't it?
No, with y'all's help, I mean, our jail is... We got capacity.
Okay.
Now, we may... Chris, now, we won't have to deal with it no more.
We can put some more people in jail.
But, 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 yes, but them numbers are including the state inmates.
But that's a high... That's a high number. You're going to have to staff and pay and take care of it.
At some point, yes, we're going to have to do that, yes. They will come. You brought up state inmates. Yeah, I'd love to send them down there. Okay, send them to the prison, but they won't take them. They ain't got room either. But we're getting paid for them state inmate numbers, and it's... Is it enough? No, but we got that raised a couple of years ago where it's helped. So them numbers are included, Mr. Denton.
They're not going down. The jail numbers are not going to go down, are they?
No, no, sir.
Commissioner Evans.
I want a question for you, Mr. Sheriff. Looking through the packet that you put together, the pay comparison, it would have been... It would be helpful to compare if we knew what our numbers were along with those.
I'll gladly get... I'll get them to you.
I figured that you would.
Yeah, I would. I will, yeah. I'll gladly get them to you.
You email me those.
And I will say this, I think there's some discussions as we speak to try to address this, I would hope. So I will get you the numbers.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes, Sheriff. Uh-oh. How long does it take and how much does it cost to process someone? I know the Mount Juliet Police Department sends a lot of people to they catch coming from Davison County over, and we have to, you know, book them into jail. What's the total cost and hours involved in that for...
If Davison County would do their job and arrest them, we wouldn't have to deal with them, okay? I'll be honest, but here in TV land. But in saying that, yeah, it's costly, but I commend Mount Juliet Police Department, Lebanon Police Department for what they do. Somebody's got to catch them. And, but it is costly. It's time-consuming, yes, and it's a hinder... It's on Wilson County citizens, yes. No, exact figure, I can give you that.
Any other questions? Anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee met August 7th in the upstairs conference room. Minutes in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Agreed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Director of Schools, report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell.
You do have a copy of my report in front of you. First thing, Sunday afternoon, August 24th, 2:00, with ribbon cutting at Legardo Elementary. You're invited. I'd love to see you there. We'll cut the ribbon, have a little bit of a brief program, and then open that building for the community and for you as well, if you want to take a look at it. It's been very smooth there. Also been very smooth at West. The actions, of course, twofold of getting the turning lane in has helped, and also, of course, getting students out has helped the traffic situation there. 10th day of school, last Friday. We're up 253 students from where we ended the year. We're at 20,760 students, knocking on the door of 21,000. And expect to see those numbers increase to really Labor Day. Personnel update, had some last-minute moves right before school opened. Patricia Iquas was hired as Principal Carol Oakland. David Sevres was hired as Assistant Principal Carol Oakland. Lance McAllister, Assistant Principal Glave Elementary, and Lisa Fear, Special Education Coordinator, and that's district-wide position. Got those filled and excited to have them to join Wilson County. In your packet, you're going to see a lot of data. I'm not going to bore you with it. I want to hit on three points. Our achievement data is back from last school year. We did put a pretty extensive data packet for you so you can see going all the way back to 2016, '17. This is achievement. This is not growth. This is, did you pass the test, basically, in all subject areas and all grade bands. Happy to report we have the highest achievement ever in all content areas in Wilson County schools. And I would encourage you to look at that data. You're going to... It's pretty easy to follow. Outstanding achievement performance last year in Wilson County schools. Second thing I want to point out, we also increased the percentage of students that scored at the exceeded level, those high-end kids. And you've often heard that's a challenge for the top 10%, but their data is even improving. And then probably the one I'm most proud about, achievement gains for all subgroups. We gave you a chart outlining that all, and I'm big about giving every kid an opportunity in Wilson County schools regardless. And that's probably the point I'm the most proud of. We still got some work to do in those, but if you look at the gains over the last three or four years in those subgroups, we have some subgroups performing as high as some districts in this state of all kids. And so shout out to our teachers, our administrators, our students, and our parents for buying in. If you go into that data, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I'm proud of it, you're going to see some proficiency levels district-wide, 60% and 70% in some subject areas. If you drill it down to some schools, you're going to see some grade bands, 70%, 75% success rate. So I encourage you to look at that data. If you have any questions, I'd love to spend more time, but I won't do that tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to meet with you and go over it and go into what that means. But very high performance last year. We will have growth data in a couple of months, and I look forward to being able to present that to you once the state gets it and turns that loose. That's different than achievement. to you once the state gets it and turns that loose. That's different than achievement. That's saying, where's the kid at? Where did they end up? And we're expecting to have excellent scores in those as well. So very proud of Wilson County schools and everybody involved, and thank you for your commitment, some of the things we do. I'll be going in the morning, or I guess it's Wednesday on my calendar, one day this week, to personally thank some coaches. We put, I made the decision to put our instructional coaches, get them into the schools, out of the central office, and put them in the schools, helping teachers teach. And we've seen a tremendous jump in elementary scores, because that's where they go to every day, is helping those teachers with instruction. And so I'm going to personally thank them this week for their hard work. Other than that, did include, oh, big news, podcast. I was on a podcast. I try to avoid that stuff at all costs, but I got caught by Bart the other day. We've started a podcast called Wilson Live. You're going to see it. And it's a way that we're going to do it with our, Bart Barker and Carter Noblyn, or Carter is our fine arts supervisor. And that's going to be where we start communicating with this community through the podcast-type measure, to get out maybe questions you get calls on. Hopefully, we're going to address that. I was on last week, and we just talked in general. But we've had one previously, talking about registration. How do we get a student registered and enrolled in a school? But we think it's what we need to be doing. It's how a lot of people communicate, and it's where they're getting information. So if you're into that, start looking for podcasts, Wilson Live. It'll be out on several platforms, and we're going to do it on a pretty regular basis, just to get information out about our schools. Included is a high school football schedule, dates and times, home games. They are starting, I guess, next Friday, this Friday night. We'll be open tonight. Encourage you, if you get an opportunity. Also have a lot of other fall sports on our campuses. Soccer is going big right now, and they're getting ready to kick off. And so encourage you, if you get an opportunity, to know we're all busy, but it means so much to our students and our schools when they see us at those events. Construction report, Central Pike Elementary. You have pictures in your package. It is moving along nicely, and that'll be another school that will be opening next school year. This time, I'll answer any questions.
Your motion approved the report.
No.
Any discussion? CNN All In Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Report from the Buildings Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
No report.
Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze.
Animal Control met on Thursday, August 7th. After the law enforcement committee minutes are in your packet, I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? CNN All In Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Audit, Commissioner Glover. Commissioner Keith?
No report.
Thank you. Broadband access cable TV, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Brown.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Dow.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Costley.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith.
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
Judicial Committee met August 6th, upstairs in the conference room. The minutes are in your package. I make a motion to receive and file.
Aye.
Any discussion? CNN All In Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Legislative ad hoc, Commissioner Costley.
No report.
Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
Planning and zoning met July 22, 5:30. Move approved, Mr.
Aye.
Any discussion? CNN All In Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rules, Commissioner Keith.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban Type Facility Board, no. Office slip, minutes are in your packet. Be received and filed.
Aye.
Any discussion? CNN All In Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Finance Directors, report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
You should have all had budget books on your desk tonight. I'm really proud of the way these turned out. I have to thank a lot of people. Specifically, I have to thank Lauren Breeze. I have to thank Joe Good. I have to thank Lebronia Horton and the Budget Committee. And we tried to keep the best of what we were doing before, the online version, and still, you know, go back to a budget document that felt a little bit more comfortable. I think it'll feel more comfortable for department heads and for everybody. So I'm just really proud of it, and I hope you guys like it as well. We're open for comments. If this is not what you want to see, if you want to see something different, let us know. We'll work on it. I don't really have anything to talk about tonight, unless you have questions for me, so.
Move approved, aye.
Any discussion? CNN All In Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Maynard. Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met August 7th, in the conference room. Minutes are in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Discussion? CNN All In Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolutions, Commissioner Marlowe.
Resolution 25-8-2, to amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution, approving Board of Education Budget Amendment 2601.
Got a motion. I got a second discussion now. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that I am a employee of Wilson County Schools, and this budget resolution includes the $2,000 bonus from the state of Tennessee. This is not county money. This is just coming from the state. But I just wanted to acknowledge that, and just say that I will be voting my conscience on this, even though I will be accepting the $2,000 bonus. Thank you.
Anyone else? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Marlowe? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23, yes.
23 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-8-3, to amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution, to make a line item adjustment and return money to the general fund.
Motion approved.
Discussion? CNN All, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23, yes.
23 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-8-5, to amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution, to make an appropriation from general fund to Sheriff's Department.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23, yes.
23 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-8-6, to amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution, to make an appropriation from courtroom security litigation tax fund to Sheriff's Department.
Move approved.
Discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23, yes.
23 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-8-4, to amend current contracts with Axion.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Aye.
A motion and a second. Discussion now? Ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23, yes.
23, yes. Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-8-7, to amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution, to make an appropriation from general fund to juvenile services.
Motion approved.
Got a motion and a second. Now discussion. CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Kurtz.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23, yes.
23, yes. Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-8-8, to amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution, to make an appropriation from general fund to judicial commissioners.
Motion approved.
Aye.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Scruggs?
Aye.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23, yes.
23, yes. Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-8-9, to amend the Budget Appropriation Resolutions, making an appropriation from general fund to finance.
Motion approved.
Aye.
Discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23, yes.
23, yes. Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-8-10, to amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution, to make an appropriation from general fund to circuit court.
Motion approved.
Aye.
A motion and a second. Any discussion now? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23, yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-8-11, to increase the adequate facilities tax for new commercial and/or industrial development.
Motion approved.
Aye.
Got a motion and a second. Now discussion. Commissioner Dow?
Yeah, we talked about this in the road commission. And we was talking about up net and spending some money for the roads and all that stuff. So I know it come up to 50 cent. I had to leave at night for it actually come up or whatever, but I just don't think that's enough. And I mean, of course, you know, everybody's got their own opinion or whatever, but I just don't think that's enough. We're looking at East Division Street down there, and you put the buildings down there. Of course, yeah, they did it in front of their building, and they're upgrading roads or whatever, but who's going to take care of the rest of it? You know what I mean? And so we're fighting and having to scrap for money to take care of these roads. And so if we start putting some of this money to the side to take care of these streets that are dangerous, school buses driving over them, and they just keep falling further and further back. So I don't, it might not be the way that everybody else wants to go, but that's just my opinion. I'm going to throw it out there that I think that it should be a dollar. So it's just my two cents.
Mr. Rich?
I watched the video of that meeting the other day, and it was very apparent that this body is torn on this. I definitely think that there is more that we can get out of this. And I would like to see it go for more than just roads. You know, if we can get a dollar, then we can put some of that towards employees, maybe, that we've been trying to find an avenue. If we can't, then we can find other avenues. I know one thing that was mentioned was, if we go in at 50 cents, we can always go up. Well, if we go in at a dollar and it stunts our growth, we can always go down. So that works both ends. And I'm going to be voting against the 50 cents, because I think that our county is worth more than 50 cents square foot.
Commissioner Jones?
I like Commissioner Dow. Y'all know my feelings on this. So 50 cents is just not enough to achieve anything that we want to achieve. Like Commissioner Rich said, if we was to make a mistake, we can always remedy it. I'd love to see it be a dollar or more.
Commissioner Breeze?
So I think the intent of facilities use tax is to help with infrastructure based on growth. It's not there to be the only revenue stream to be able to deal with, you know, with streets or anything else that we're dealing with from a, you know, capital project perspective. We also need to remember that AFT is a one-time revenue, at which point you can only use it for one-time expenditures, meaning that you can't use it for personnel or employees or pay of any kind. So just keep that in mind as we move forward. I think the most important part of this is, this was in our private act in 2003. And in that private act, it just says that we have the right to be able to charge a commercial AFT based on a two-thirds vote of the county commission. So there's our parameters right there. Now, the county commission at the time tied this to building permit fees. And I don't think any of us were aware that that was by resolution, but it was. So I think that the most important part of this, as we move forward, is to make sure that we actually untie this from building permit fees for a couple of different reasons. First off, because it's not, as a county tax or fee, however you want to call it, it's not consistent across the county. It's based on building permit fees of the local jurisdiction where you're building, meaning that our building permit fees are what it's based upon within the county. If you're building Mount Juliet, it's based on their building permit fees. If you're building in Lebanon, it's based on their building permit fees. And they're all different. So I think it's really important as we move forward, we make sure that we actually do something to untie this. I think 50 cents is a good starting point. I think it puts us in line with our main competitors, which are Robertson, Murray, and Rutherford, who all have adopted the 2024 version of County Powers Act. And the County Powers Act allows them to charge $1.50 per square foot up to 150,000 square feet. So they're capped at 225,000. What's in front of you is 50 cents a square foot, but with no minimum and no maximum. So the other situation that we find ourselves in currently is, because of the way our building permit fees are structured, anybody who's building something 10,000 square feet or less right now is paying 90 cents a square foot. So that's all your small businesses. And then there's also a $5,000 minimum that our, this body passed in 2023. So, for example, I know there was a business that added a bathroom. I think their building permit fee was about $600. They paid a $5,000 minimum for AFT. So the 50 cents a square foot would allow us to give a break to these smaller businesses. It also gives a break to people who are building 10,000 to 30,000 square feet, because at this point in time, that's 60 cents a square foot. But if you go back up and continue to look at the scale as you keep going, 400,000 square feet plus, we're only charging 10 cents. So the burden here is lying on our smaller businesses, not the larger warehouses and things that are actually really are stressing our infrastructure with trucks and so on. So the 50 cents making it consistent makes it fairer across the board in general. So just keep all that in mind as we move forward. And if we, if we press ourselves out of the market, then we don't then have the businesses here that will then pay property taxes to be able to help offset the cost of doing business in the county in general, doing business meaning the services that we provide. And more of that burden is going to lay on our residents. So we need to be careful and make sure that we're a business-friendly county, because I believe right now, I think the statistic is about 30% of our property taxes come from businesses. So we need to make sure that we continue to be business-friendly, so they will help carry the burden, so it doesn't end up on residents. So I know that's a lot of information all at one time, but as we make this decision, because it's a big one, I think we need to keep in mind all this information. And I understand the idea of trying to go to a dollar. And I understand that we can go backwards, but we can't gain back what we've lost if we lose projects. And we can't gain back what could have been property tax in perpetuity every year that can be used for employee raises and employee pay and benefits. So just keep all that in mind as we move forward in this process. And it does take two-thirds to pass this.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, this thing's been talked about a little bit. I don't know how many of you watched the planning commission meetings, but I guess we worked on this about four months. I want to thank Commissioner McFarland, because he invited Lauren Breeze, a researcher in the Finance Department. And I don't know if we'd ever unscrambled these eggs to figure out how much we were actually getting, because it was a mess. I mean, it really was. We didn't know where we were. We figured we were eight to 10 cents square foot, which is horrendously low, lower than anybody in middle Tennessee. But 50 cents puts us the highest in middle Tennessee, absolutely, and above 500, above 450,000 square foot. It puts it real, it puts us a lot higher, because it's not capped. It does two things. It uncaps the top, but it caps the bottom. And so if somebody wants to build another pizza restaurant on the other side of Lebanon, that's been doing good on the other side of Lebanon, they can do it for $1,500 instead of 5,000 minimum. It'll help small business. But it'll also charge large business. I want to say another thing, because when I come to these meetings, everyone has, has. has background in law enforcement, and school teachers, and construction, and firemen, yeah, don't forget firemen, planning. But for me, I was an economic developer in Mount Juliet for seven years, and when I first got the job, my boss, he did my budget before me, and I looked and I had $10,000 of travel expenses, and I said, where am I going? You know, you're gonna move me around. And, and he said, well, you're gonna follow Don Fox and Sue Sines around. That's what you're gonna do. And I said, Don Fox boxed in military, didn't he? I don't, I don't know that I really want to do that without some hazardous duty pay. He might not appreciate me following him all over this country trying to figure out how to get retail. But I did, and, and, and he was rather gracious, although he never introduced me any of his customers. But I did watch Don Fox, who I will say, on the record, the greatest retail economic developer this county has ever seen. He is. He was. He knew how to do it. He worked. It was just hard work. And that's what I want to tell you guys. Economic development on retail is extremely hard. We have two cities that are punching way above their weight. They do better than most any city in the state with the demographics that they're out there selling, with the income levels and the density. They don't have, they don't have a great hand like Brentwood and Franklin, but they get new things in here. You've got a lot of things coming to Lebanon. I know a lot of you've heard of them. A dollar, choke it. And if you choke these two cities, you're gonna choke the school system, because half of everything they get, the other half goes to the school system. I've been on the J CDB now 18 years, seven years for Mount Juliet, 11 years for the county, and I have never seen but maybe one or two months compared year before that our sales tax has ever gone down. That's incredible. You know, most cities look like a cardio in the hospital, in the ER room, up and down everywhere. You can't plan on anything. But in Wilson County, our retail sales tax collections have gone up almost at a line like that. We don't want to kill that. I, I don't, this isn't perfect for me. I'd cap it at 500,000, but I would rather leave it alone at pass than mess with it and us go home with eight to 10 cents. So I would urge the county commission, just vote this straight up like it is, and if it's, if it's not enough, we'll come back later. We're already the highest in Middle Tennessee if we pass this. Thanks.
Commissioner Rich?
You know, you just said that, you know, we go home and we go back.
Eight. We don't necessarily have to do that. We don't have to start over. We can, we can work this out tonight and come to a resolution between us and understand that, hey, maybe a dollar's too high, maybe 50's too low, but we can start throwing some numbers out there and make this thing happen tonight, and we don't have to lose ground. I would love to see an amendment at 75 cents.
So got amendment on the floor for 75 cents. I got a second. Other discussion? Take a, take a, go ahead. Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Chairman, is that 75 cents still with no cap?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm gonna retract. I'll wait till the vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Would the low end still stay at 50 cents up to 12,000 like we originally proposed?
I think what his amendment was, 75 cents flat.
We can, we can work it to where your smaller businesses are gonna...
That would help the small businesses, and I could go along with, personally, I could go along with the 75 cents over 12,000, and that would protect our small business owners if we would keep it at 50 cents up to 12,000 square feet.
So you want to change your motion to 50 cents for 12,000 square feet and under, 75 cents for 12,000, for 12,001 and above with no cap? So you made a motion for that, and you will accept that one? Okay. We're still in discussion. I'm gonna go to Mr. Marlowe.
Okay. You can't only change that because you got other things down here in this motion that deals with percentages or certain cents going to roads and schools. And so that's gonna have to be changed as well. You can't leave that the way it is. And we, and it's already been stated more than once that if we change it to 50 cents, we're gonna be higher than anybody else around us at this point in time. If it's not good enough, we can go up. But if it's too much, we're gonna lose first, and there's no sense in losing anything. And even at 50 cents, we may, may lose a little bit. But there's no sense in changing anything in this resolution at this point in time until we see how it affects Wilson County as a whole. There's been a lot of discussion on this. We've had people to give us information that really know about this sort of thing, and we need to adhere to what we have been told. Do we want more money? Of course we do. What kind of aggravates me, and I'm sorry, I'm getting off point here, but kind of aggravates me is that for two years, I tried to raise the AFT for homes, and I couldn't get it anywhere. And now we see that there's a problem, so we're going to skyrocket our AFT on our commercial and retail and industrial people and kind of shoo them future building projects away just because we want more money. Yes, we, we need it. I'm, I'm not saying we don't, but this is not the place to get it. The other thing is, this is, and this has already been stated also, getting it higher than 50 cents is gonna hurt our small business. It's gonna hurt our retail. It's gonna help our small business, but it's gonna hurt our retail, and it's could likely cause us to have to raise our property tax if this flops. I do not want to go there, and I know there's a lot of people in this room will not vote for a property tax unless it's absolutely necessary. I would, I would hope we would leave it alone for now and see how it develops and see how it affects our county, and I'll quit there. Commissioner Kurtz?
Mr. Marlowe stated that we're gonna be the highest around. At least we're the highest around in something because we're sure not in salaries. And we're all sitting here talking about where to find money, where to find money, and it may be one-time money, but we're gonna have to rob Peter to pay Paul at some point. And, you know, we're, we're way behind in a lot of things, roads, flooding problems. I'd love to take this money and fix everybody out there in the Castlewell Pike area. But I just, we sit in here and we toss things around, and we never, we never have a solution, and we finally get a solution, and none of us want to apply it. I think it's time that everybody makes a decision on what we want, need to do in the county, and these are hard decisions, and we were elected to make hard decisions.
Commissioner Berice?
Math, just so you know what you're looking at. So at 50 cents a square foot for a 500,000 square foot building, you're talking about $250,000. At 75 cents, you're talking 375,000. So what we're arguing about here is $125,000 one time. And if we position ourselves where people don't even want to look at our county, we're losing property tax ongoing for not only a real property tax at a 40% assessment rate for a commercial, you're also losing your tangible personal at 30% that could be in that 500,000 square foot warehouse, all over one-time difference of $125,000. I'm not prepared to risk that. And for me personally, I'd rather have the additional property tax ongoing money that we can than turn around and try to take care of our employees. Whereas with this, it's one-time money. So it's great for infrastructure, and I think we need it, and I think we need to restructure like what we're discussing, but I also think we need to be really mindful to make sure that we stay within the market, or we're gonna lose projects right across the county line at Rutherford.
Okay, so what I've got on the floor right now is it will take a 12 majority vote, 13 majority vote to pass, and I have a motion for 50 cents below 1200 feet, square feet, 75 above, and then to deal with the rest of the resolution, the way the resolution was written up, that we were getting 10 cents to begin with, and we're putting that in a certain place, and the rest of it was gonna go into another fund. So in this case, I'm assuming what you'll tell me is that you want the 10 cents to stay where it's at and the 65 cents to go in the other fund. That would be consistent with what we passed. Are you agreeable with that?
I would agree with that.
Okay. Are you, you accept that one? Okay. So we're still there. I had a call for the question. I had two people in the hopper, I think. One of them is Commissioner Hobbs, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Gentry is still in or not. Commissioner Hobbs?
Every month for the past four years, me and Mr. Evans right here has gone through some kind of zoning. Of course, we're gonna feel differently than y'all do on some of these projects. We are built out. We're done. They keep coming. They're not stopping coming. They're calling us every day, every day. They call, another developer. I'm all about raised it. I think it's the best idea we've ever had. They're not gonna quit coming. Go to Rutherford. They're fixing to develop the whole other side of 452 right now. And guess what? They're fixing to be higher than us. Sit back and watch. So yes, I'm all about it. I'm gonna go along with Commissioner Jones and Dow on this one.
Seeing nobody else are ready to vote on the amendment. All in favor with the amendment? We probably need to do, can we do with you?
I'm ready.
Okay. You're ready. So here's what you're voting on. Are you ready? Commissioner Dow? So what you're voting on is yes, if you want to amend this resolution, 50 cents below 1200 square feet, 75 above, and the split on the money? 12,000. And the split on the money is 10 cents where it was going, the 65 going to where we had the other one going. So if you want to vote for that?
I think what you just said is different than what's on the screen. Did you say 50 up to 12,000 and 75 over 12,000?
That's what I said.
That's different than what's on the screen.
Well, give me just a second, and I will...
It's fine. I just wanted to, I wanted to clarify about what we were voting on though.
Just to rehash what we got. 50 cents at 12,000 square feet or below, 75 cent at 12,001 square feet or above. 10 cents, Mr. Maynard, is gonna go into what fund?
It goes into 189 and 151, and it will split between those two funds.
And the 65 cent would go into what fund?
189, but it will go into a different line. It will be kept separate.
Okay, to be spent on roads as we earlier discussed. Okay? Take 12 votes to pass that, and then we'll come back in about 13. Then we'll come back and get the other. My bad. Mike, whenever you're ready? I can do a voice though, but I know that ain't gonna work, so I ain't gonna do it. Yes, sir.
About where the funds are going. They will be isolated to where the road department perhaps can come before the county commission to get approval to use them for a specified road project. Road improvement.
And in talking with the road superintendent after your meeting, we explained that to him, and he'll take that through the road board first, and then come to you guys next, and you'll know exactly where those dollars go.
Is that read correctly now?
So Commissioner Hall?
I just have a question because we're dealing with inequalities in my class right now.
Okay.
And if we say 75 cents for 12,000 and 1 square feet and over, and then 50 cents for 12,000 square feet and under, where are you with between 12,000 and 12,001 square feet?
It's got an under.
I understand that, but if you're at 12,000 square feet and under, up to 12,000, and then you're at 12,001 square feet and over, what if somebody comes in with 12,000.92 square feet?
They're over 12,000. Yeah, they're over 12,000.
Why don't you just say over 12,000?
Yeah.
Over 12,000.
Yeah.
Want to argue it.
Yeah. So anything over 12,000, we'll put that in if we need to. All right, if you're ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
Please cast your vote. Commissioner Marlowe? All hearts and minds good with the vote. Takes 13. Please record.
14, yes.
Now you're gonna come back, and you're gonna vote on the resolution as amended, and that takes 17 for you to pass that one. And any other comments or questions? Not? Are you ready to vote? Okay. So we can make that adjustment. I don't think that's an issue. Anything above 12 to answer, to take care of that issue. Excuse me? We're fixing to vote now. It takes 17 to vote on the same thing you just voted on.
I was in the queue.
Right. You, you have something to say?
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner?
I have an amendment. The cap is at 300,000 square feet.
Okay. Motion on the floor to cap it at 300,000 square feet? I got a second. Okay.
The reason that I'm wanting to do that is at 75 cents, that, that's gonna be the County Powers Act, and Sumner County's considering it. Rutherford County's already adopted it. So if we go over 300,000, we're basically gonna forego everything over 300,000 square feet the way I look at it in the county. We're not gonna get anything. This is gonna be the let's improve Sumner County, Rutherford County Act, school system, you know, let's make, let's make Rutherford County schools better again Act. But if, in my opinion, if we want to save our bacon on this, we cap it at 300,000 square feet. At least we won't be giving up big retail and big commercial to our neighbors.
So got a motion is second on the floor. Will take 13 to amend the resolution as we just passed to cap the footage at 300,000 square feet for 75 cents?
Yep.
Got it? I got three people in the hopper. Commissioner Fields, now four.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to get Mr. John's opinion on this from the Joint Economic Development Committee.
We don't normally reach out to that, do we, Mike?
If you do, you, you've gotta vote. If we're gonna follow our rules, you gotta vote.
We'd have to vote to do that?
Okay, hold on. I'm gonna vote no.
That's okay. All right. Commissioner Jones?
If we cap, we're going right back to where we came from. The idea is to generate revenue. You put a cap on it, you're not generating revenue when, once you reach the cap.
Commissioner Hall?
Does anybody have any idea how many commercial properties have been built in Wilson County in, let's say, the last five, three to five years over 300,000 square feet?
I wouldn't have that knowledge. I think it was in the packet maybe they put out at one time in our planning and zoning meetings. I think he put together some, but I don't, I don't have the knowledge of that. No, sir, sorry. Do what?
I don't have it with me.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it was there.
Commissioner Denton?
Yes, I, I've thought about the thing, both sides. I think we're dancing on dangerous ground by raising it. I understand it, though. I personally don't think an AFT tax on residential may even be ethical, but when it comes to commercial, I definitely think that we ought to get, we certainly ought to be much higher than we are right now. And when I did some more research on it, I found that we're on the top end of that. And I ran one of the big places here. If we cap it at, if we're gonna raise, raise it up to 75, we want revenue, we cap it at 300,000. I ran one of the buildings that was sold not too awful long ago, it's been quite profitable for our county, 619,000 square feet. They paid $50,000, I think. Under the 50 cents, they would have paid $309,000. We are still a quarter of a million to the good from that point. So to cap it at 300,000, I mean, you get a large company like this. We lose half of our AFT. And that's just, if we're raising it just for revenue, that's, that's our reason. It's not to deter, it's not to, and I do, I did look at the fact... It's not to deter, it's not to, and I do, I did look, the fact there is studies to show that an AFT will sometimes help growth. But it also, if you get too large, the studies show that it hinders it. So if we think 75 cents will work, then that, that's one thing. I think it's a little dangerous, but if we cap it, I think we're taking away what we're trying to gain.
Commissioner Breeze?
So just to give you another data point, last year for fiscal year '25, we made $349,000 in total in commercial AFT with an effective rate of somewhere between 8 and 10 cents. So anything we do is going to increase the revenue that we're bringing in, whether you cap it or not. But if we raise this to the point where we don't actually have projects come in, then, I mean, 75 cents of zero is zero. So you've got to remember that. We've got to be able to come up with something that actually is sustainable in middle Tennessee. And if we're not careful, we're going to price ourselves out of the market. And I understand what Commissioner Hobbs said about his area, but his area is not the only area in this county. I mean, that's something that we've talked about with the land use plan, is that we need other commercial districts in this county. I mean, we're projected to gain another 100,000 people over the next 25 to 30 years, at which point we need places for them to work. And if we price ourselves out where there's no additional commercial development, then we're going to end up as a commuter county, first of all. And then all the tax base, or all the, you know, the taxes are going to land on top of residents because we won't have commercial development. So it's, we need to be really cautious with this, that we don't price ourselves out of the market and, and especially for a one-time fee. And I think we're, we're losing sight of that, that this is a one-time fee, which is great for infrastructure, but that doesn't help us with ongoing revenue. And if we kill the project from the get-go, there is no ongoing revenue, which puts us in a much worse situation than we could have been. So just be cautious.
Mayor Gentry?
Let me make a comment. There's some comments being made tonight that concern me, and that is, we're, we're talking about this as a revenue raiser, okay? It's not. It's not a property tax. Section 3 says, "It is the intent and purpose of this act to authorize Wilson County to impose a tax on new development in the county payable at the time of issuance of a building permit or stipend of occupants. Here's the key: so as to ensure and require that the persons responsible for new development share in the burdens of growth by paying their fair share for the cost of new and expanded public facilities made necessary by such development." So I think that whatever you do, I don't care, but whatever you do, you've got to understand that it's to take care of stuff like schools and jails and roads and, and those type of things. It is not a supplement to your general fund budget. It can't be. If we say that it is, we're probably going to be subject to being attacked in court over how we did it. So make sure it is related to the fair share for the cost of new and expanded public facilities.
I had Commissioner Jones, you're out. You're on my docket, but you're, nope. Okay. Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, it seems to be more than one motivation here. Some motivation is to keep people from coming here and building. And that, that's a definite motivation for taxes. Another motivation would be to raise revenue, but if you raise it to 75 cents with no limit, something like Costco or Sam's or something like that, I guarantee you, they wouldn't come here. As a matter of fact, some of the cities are paying people to come here. I know Mount Juliet paid Costco to build there.
Paid them.
They paid them to build there. So all I'm saying is if we want to price ourselves out of the market not to build, that's fine if that's what you want. But if you're wanting to raise money and that's a one-time fee, but you really want to raise money on property tax that is over and over again, it, it's like, you've got to make up your mind what you want. Salaries are predicated on property tax typically, not on one-time fees like marriage license or something like that. But any, that's what I have to say.
Last one in the hopper, Commissioner Chandler?
Yeah, Mr. Gentry and even Mayor Jennings made very good points. And I'm afraid what we're going to do is if we continue to raise this even higher, for where it's at at 75 cents, we're going to take away the revenue generators that are preventing us from having to tax our citizens every day. I know Lebanon, Mount Juliet, and Mount Juliet for sure, we really rely on sales tax and shopping. So that's good quality retail developments. Mr. Gentry mentioned it with Costco. That's a great revenue generator for our community. And we didn't have to raise our property taxes high as the city did, which to me, District 10, who I represent, the burden was less on them because we have good quality retail in that area. I'm afraid the talk I hear tonight seems like it's going to be a quick fix and get us to where we need to be. But reversing this is going to be a lot harder to do than our quick vote tonight. And we're going to lose the ground that we have and it's going to begin to affect our citizens because we're going to lose the quality developments, the quality retail, the quality restaurants that for my constituents, that's what they want to see, is that quality stuff. Now I get how Mr. Hobbs's constituents don't want to see the warehousing. What I'm also afraid of is because we can't agree on something, we're not going to get anywhere because I am not going to vote for 75 cents. But I think we can probably all agree on something, which is 50 cents, because it gets us ahead. You know? And I'm almost, I think we're at a loss because I don't think we're going anywhere. I think we're going to continue to be eight, eight, 10 cents for growth. And we're going to be in the same situation we were in before we walked in this room tonight. And I know we can come together. I think 75 cents is too much, but it seems like everyone has an appetite for 50 cents.
So what you have on the floor right now is to cap the amendment that you passed previously at 300,000 square feet. So if you wanted, if you want to amend that amendment at 300,000 square feet cap, you'll vote yes. If you don't, you vote no. Are we ready to vote? Please cast your vote. We'll take 13 votes, Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Keith. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
You got seven, yes, 16, no.
So the amendment failed, so now you'll be voting on, which will take 17. Again, 50 cents for 12,000 square feet and under. Anything over 12,000 square feet would be 75 cents at no cap. And this is...
I'm in the queue.
That'd be great, but let me, let me finish, okay? Oh, no, not, not yet. Yeah. So 65 cent would be going into the road fund and 10 cents would stay in the fund that it's in right now. And that's what you're about to vote on? Take 17 votes. Commissioner Breeze?
Before we vote on this, I'd like to actually amend back to the original version that you have sitting on your desk to 50 cents, exactly as it, as it reads.
Got a motion, a second, and we can vote on going back to the original amendment as it was.
Original resolution.
Resolution, as it was.
Original resolution as it reads.
As it was, yeah. Commissioner Breeze and... Commissioner Chandler?
How we started.
Okay. So we're going to go back to square one is what you're voting for here. Takes 12 of you to do that and 13. Gosh almighty, what's the matter with you tonight? I don't know. I don't want to vote. I don't want to tie, for sure. Commissioner Chandler?
Yeah, so, again, as you think about this, I don't think we have it to get 75. I think we at least have it to get 50. Right? So the, all y'all who have wanted to raise it, to me, this would be your opportunity to raise it somewhere beyond the eight and the 10 cents that what we've tried for. So to me, this is strategic for you because I definitely think we all have the 50.
Mr. Franklin?
I want to agree with Commissioner. We've got two absent. Lose six votes, it's done. We're back to eight cents to 10 cents. And, you know, I just want to make that point. I would, I would rather, I would rather go back to eight to 10 cents and not kill the property tax going forward. You're not going to, you, you killed the golden goose here on retail. You're not going to revive it with a can of Narcan. It takes a decade sometimes. Ask Cheatham County. It's, it, I hear this kicked around, yeah, we can go up, but we're up too high, we can go down. Yeah, you can after the developers all plan projects for their next five budgets and Wilson County won't be in there. That's what happens out there, guys. I mean, I've been out there. I begged, borrowed and stolen to get somebody to develop in Mount Juliet when there was one stoplight down there. And it's hard. And, you know, just leave it, leave it there. I think we got the votes for 50 cents. I don't think you got them for 75. You want to go back to eight or 10? Make your mind up. Thanks.
Had a call for the question. I have three in the hopper though, at this time. Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to go along with Commissioner Chandler and Commissioner Breeze and Commissioner Franklin. We kick this thing around a lot in P and Z and 50 cents was by far the best of the solution. So I beg you to vote for the 50 cents as written in the resolution.
Commissioner Costley?
Is that 50 cents with, with a cap, correct?
No cap.
No cap. Okay. And just for the record, we're talking about like Costco and them, you're talking about 195,000 square feet, so it wouldn't affect them anyway. That's all I got.
Commissioner Hall?
Commissioner Franklin, I've just got a question if you'll answer it. I don't know if you can or not, but I'll ask it anyways. When you were negotiating with businesses to bring them to Mount Juliet, how many of them were saying, "Well, you know, the adequate facility tax in this county is this, but y'all's is this and vice versa. And we'll go with y'all since y'all are lower." Did that ever happen?
Yeah, I answered that.
Yes, sir?
You know, it's like when you get a bad meal in a restaurant. You vote with your feet. You never see them again. They don't tell you. You just have to know the market. You have to know who you're competing against. You have to know what's around you. And I'd just like to remind everybody, this, we worked on this for four months. We brought in the JCDB. We pay them almost 600,000 out of this county to know what they're doing. They're on the front line. They're the ones, they came up with 45 cents. We went to 50. They thought it wouldn't hurt anything. We'd still be the highest, but it probably wouldn't kill us. I mean, you've just got to know. It's an educated guess. I guess, I guess that's my answer.
It's a gamble.
It's a gamble.
So we're about to vote to go back amended back to 50 cents on the original resolution. Takes 13 votes to get that done. So if you want to go back to the original resolution, say yes. If you don't want to, say no. And it's time to vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote now? Please record.
15 yes, 8 no.
So 15 yes, 8 no. Now we're back to the original resolution that was on the floor to begin with. It'll take 17 votes to pass that one. And are you ready to vote?
Call for questions.
Yeah, nobody's in the hopper. So going to vote on the original resolution? Okay, takes 17. If you want to vote for it, that's 50 cents, no cap. Vote yes. If you don't, vote no. Are we ready? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Keith?
So, just for clarity, Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Just for clarity?
Yes, sir.
What's the, what's the vote?
You're voting for the regular resolution that was on the floor of 50 cents with no cap on it and it takes 17 to pass it.
If it doesn't pass, does that mean we don't have another opportunity?
If it doesn't pass, then we just start all over again. You don't have one tonight, but you, yeah.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 18 yes. Resolution passes. We're ready to move on. Commissioner Earl O.
Resolution 25-8-12 to separate the amount of adequate facility tax on new commercial and/or industrial development from building permit fees.
Motion to second. Any discussion? See you at nine. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Denton? Commissioner Kurtz? Commissioner Costley? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23 yes.
Resolution passes. On old business tonight, Mayor Jennings needs to speak to you.
Yeah, we, in July, we brought a resolution to you that night and suspended the rules and voted upon it for some improvements out at the YAG Center. I forget what they were. Do you remember what they were?
In the expo, the AV equipment, 650,000.
And questions have been raised about that, about whether or not it was on the agenda and whether or not we get, did it properly. So I have had discussions with the person who's been raising that issue. And we're going to put that back on the agenda in September for you to confirm your vote, We couldn't get it, well, let me put another step in there.[1744.01]